So, we will call the January 30th regular school board meeting, called to order at 6 o'clock PM. And we'll call, I see that everyone is present, so we will do the pledge of the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have any changes that they want to make to the agenda? So, under the consent agenda, F personnel. We just would like to pull numbers 1 and 2, just to have some questions answered about that. And we will put it down for 10B. Does anyone else have any changes to the agenda? I will take a motion to accept. We don't have to motion it if there's no changes, so we'll just go to the approval.
We made a change.
You just made a change.
Oh, we did make a change. So I will make a motion to approve the change.
I'll make a motion for the changes to the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Kyle? Okay. And then I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Need a vote on your motion?
Yep, gotta vote on the changes to the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have any discussion about it, or just vote? Just vote, okay. So, changes to consent agenda, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, let's move to the approval of the agenda.
I move approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Do we have any public input tonight?
Do you have to be pre-signed up for that?
We try to do that.
I just wanted to mention, off the Performance Center, the bathroom water fountain area that's there. If we could at all get access to that for the Performance Center use. We were coming up on like scheduled times where we're gonna be supervising, you know, 20, 25, 30 athletes at a time. So we're kind of held responsible for those kiddos. And right now, we're propping doors, having them come all the way through the building. And I learned, well, I mean, I went to school here too, but I kinda forgot, so I wasn't in the shop much. But, it's like, then I learned there's a bathroom 10 feet on the other side of that door, and I think it's kinda silly that we're not getting access to that. So I just wanted to mention that for maybe some thinking as we start rolling more kids through there shortly. Just for the safety piece of that too, like I mentioned, we're propping doors right now. That's messing with Cardinal kids, so.
All right, thank you. All right, recognition and good things happening. It is paraprofessional week in the state of Minnesota is held the last full week of January. The Leroy Ostrander School District is very thankful for our paraprofessional staff, and we appreciate all they do to make our schools great. Thank you to our paraprofessionals. January is Minnesota School Board Appreciation Month, and so thank you to all the school board directors that serve for our students and staff. Thank you to Dawn Holmquist of Humanities 101. Dawn has been helping direct the one-act play and has allowed the school district to use her studio. Is much appreciated, Dawn. Some other good things are happening that are gonna come up in the reports from our principal and superintendent. So at this time, we'll move to number 8, and we're gonna have Dan present SMEC audit report.
Awesome. So I see a couple new board members here. I gave you a kind of a new board member, packet on SMEC, who we are, what we do. Just a quick overview, seven district co-op that we put together to provide services to our unique learners, starting about 2008 officially. And every year, we've added programming to the co-op until about 2020. That's when we got the SMEC Ed Center built, and that's where we have our Level 4 program for students with more behaviors and mental health needs. And then we also added the ALC at that time. So now, we have a complete continuum of services to meet the needs of all of our learners in our seven school districts for that. Right now, to give our audit, I'd like to introduce John Mark Dundas. He's the new SMEC business manager, and he has an audit, and we'll present that. And after that, I'll give a little update on other things happening in SMEC.
All right, I'm John Mark Dundas, I'm the business manager. I actually used audit, so this is all second nature to me. So if there's something you don't understand, just please ask me a question, and I can clarify some things. You guys each have a copy of our PowerPoint there. So, starting on page 1, we have an unmodified opinion. That just means our financials fairly represent what's happening at SMEC and are materially accurate to what's going on at SMEC. We went down to page 2, this is an overview of our revenues. You can see what they were. They totaled up 7.1 million approximately. It's actually a little bit down from prior years, or the prior year. That's mainly due to, so with special ed funding, it's based on the prior year expenditures. And we had a little dip in state expenditures from prior year. Moving on to our general fund expenditures, you can see where they're at. They were 6 million, 6.3 million. So we're making a little bit of money, we're saving up for some things, so we're not spending all of what we're bringing in revenue. So, you can see they're up from the prior year, and that's primarily due to staffing. We added our mental health department a couple of years ago, and we've increased staff. Currently, we have about 95 employees. Last year, at this time, we had about 85 employees. So we're adding quite a few new employees to try to meet the needs of our students. And then moving on to page 5. This is our general fund balance. You can see it grew, it went up a little bit. It increased by 670,000, but only 119 of that was unassigned. So, you can see it went up in a lot of the restricted fund balance categories. And just to note, we've assigned a little under 19,000 for grow your own. This is a staple of what SMEC does, we send people back to school to become licensed special ed teachers. We primarily did it with level 3 and 4, tier 3 and 4 teachers. So, people who already have the special ed license, but we would send them back to get an additional license to be working in an area. Example would be, say you're licensed in developmental delay or something along those lines, but we need you to work in an autism program. We actually would pay for your license to go back to school, but in return, the teacher would sign a contract saying they would work for us for five years. There's been a few hiccups at the state level with how we were funding that. So, in order to make sure that we can continue that program, we've set some money aside to keep that program going. Another thing to note is, we have $180,000 assigned for debt service. Our debt becomes callable in 2026, and we've been saving all the access fees we get from non-member districts who send students to our Level 4 facility. We charge them an access fee as a percentage of debt, and we set that aside for when our debt becomes callable in 2026. So we're building a pile of money to pay excess principal on the debt when it becomes callable. Another thing to note is, we have $204,000 restricted for the final debt payment. When the debt was taken out originally, as a compliance agreement with the bondholders, we had to save $200,000 for the final debt payment. Well, that's in a restricted bank account, it earns interest, so that's why I wanted to note that. Moving on to pages 7. This is a really interesting story, but it looks really weird, so I'm gonna explain it.
Is it this one?
Yep. It has a really weird-looking graph. So prior to me, starting at SMEC, there was a lot of miscommunication about the building construction for the current ed center with ALC and Level 4. There was a lot of mixed messages, and the underlying assumption was that we were over budget. In reality, we were under budget by 111,000. So, I discovered that shortly after I was hired, I was reviewing some things and brought it to the attention of our cabinet and our board that we actually have excess bond proceeds that really need to be spent on the original intent of that bond, which was the building construction and all the projects. So, there were a lot of things that got cut from the project because we thought we were over budget. In reality, we weren't. So we're trying to go through and finish all those projects that, due to, you know, miscommunication, got cut. And that's what this is showing, is, you know, the original bond proceeds came in, we spent them, and we spent more of them. But then they accidentally closed out the building construction fund prematurely. And then last year, we reopened it, we reversed that closing entry. So that's why it looks really weird, but we were actually gonna use that money to build a garage for our buses, which wasn't the original plan. But we never built it because we thought we were over budget. So, that's why this graph is a little weird-looking. Moving on to page 9. This is our debt. This is just showing how much principal is left on the debt. You can see as of June 30th, 2022, there was 3.7 million, well, under 3.8 million dollars in the certificates of participation that we had originally issued. The final payment on that is August 1st, 2033. But as I alluded to earlier, we have money set aside for, it becomes callable, first thing we can go and pay excess principal on it is August 1st, 2026. So we're gonna try to pay, we've been saving up money for that as we charge access fees to non-member districts. And we have $180,000 saved up for an excess principal payment in 2026, as well as for the final debt payment. If it stays true to schedule, it'll be in 2033. But we have $200,000 saved up for that right now. And those will both continue to grow as the years go by. The next page shows you our next five years of principal and interest on our debt. And you can see, like any loan, you know, principal's gradually going up and interest is gradually going down on it. Page 11, I'd like to just note, this does not affect our day-to-day operations. It is, if you really want me to explain it to you, I can explain it when I have more time, but this does not affect our day-to-day operations. It's something that, it's only in our financials and does not really affect our day-to-day operations. Moving on to the last page in there, page 12. This is just a summary of highlights from our financials. And you can read through that. The big highlights is, we were over our 20% threshold. So, we actually are going to our board and asking what they wanna do with the excess fund balance above our fund balance threshold. The ALC restricted fund balance actually includes 28,000 for SMEC Academy. So we run summer programming for students going into grades K through 8. It's kind of a STEM or STEAM camp over the summer for students who need a little help. Some of them may be specialized, some of them may not be. And so we have money restricted for that right now.
Some of the board members may recall, that was our reading and math camps, what they used to be called before we started taking on some of the other stuff.
Another thing is, the current formula for state special ed is based on prior year expenditures. So, the example would be, say we spent $3 million in state special ed in '21, we would be reimbursed in '22 for $3 million. That's the way the funding works currently. And that's just one thing to note. The way the formula works, there's always a timing lag because the state has to do their final reports and then issue the revenue. Right now, the ALC and Level 4 are both full, and they have a waitlist on them. So, we know we need space. We've been trying to figure out how to address it. We've looked at doing some night classes for ALC, but that, we haven't really gotten the interest from teachers or students as far as that. And we're just looking for how to save up for expansion because we know eventually we're gonna need more classroom space, eventually we're gonna need shop space. So how do we save up and allocate resources for that? So, we don't have to issue debt. So, that's what we've been looking at in the last two to three months. We've been trying to figure out how to fund our own expansion. Another thing to note is, SMEC is growing. There's a really high demand for special ed services. So, we're constantly adding new staff. We're looking to expand our programming, but also maintain our staffing levels too. We are actually opening up a new program next year. It's English Language Learners, or English Learners Program in Lisle. It'll serve our newcomers, so those who have limited to no English skills. So it'll be addressing them first, and it'll be a half-day program. We are also, our ALC has an all-time high number of students. Last year, at this time, we were serving about 50 students, now we're at 73. So, and we also have a waiting list on that too. And with our Level 4, we can serve about 12 students at a time. And I think right now, we have right around 11 or 12, but also with a waiting list because we have a lot of students who are trying to get out of state placement, but, you know, do the logistics of things, that's not happening right now. So, any questions?
One nice things about John Mark as our business manager, he is very thorough and detailed. So, for the rest of the report, I don't have a lot. The Grow Your Own, John Mark talked a little bit about, but that is a cornerstone of SMEC. We have sent people back to school. When we first started, we purchased services from Austin, Albert Lee, Rochester, all the districts around, by us sending teachers back to school, paying for them to get those licenses. We now sell services to those districts. When we look at, right now, there's a teacher shortage and it's hard to find staff. We have not been hit as hard as other districts because our teachers are contracted with us. So the signing bonuses that some of the other districts are offering aren't really appealing because of the contracts we have in place. So we definitely wanna keep that going. With the federal dollars being removed, we can't use that per se anymore. So we've been looking at other opportunities to build up revenue in SMEC to send teachers back. But we've also been in a couple different Grow Your Own grants. We paired up with Regenton and Austin Public School for a $500,000 grant for Grow Your Own that we submitted, we're waiting to hear back for that. We also have paired up with some of our legislators to write a bill specifically to send special ed teachers back, people that wanna be special ed teachers back to get licensed. And that's in the works right now. So those are two of the things that we've been looking at for the Grow Your Own, in addition to putting aside some money that we sent. So when I say we sell out services to other districts, we sell out services like to Albert Lee. When we do that, we charge a premium to them with you guys. You guys have it at cost when we sell it out to them, but on a...
It's at market rate, so it's whatever the going rate for if it's speech or OT or whatever service.
Usually about a 15% markup. That profit that we make on there goes right back into sending our next group of teachers back to school. So that's how we're doing that. Building update, John Mark talked about a little bit. We're helping out with transportation to leave that burden on the districts. When we look at that, we purchased the vans, we've hired drivers. We need a garage in order to store these vehicles. Right now, we're getting snow and ice, and they're all out in the parking lot. So, you come in the morning, move them to one side, they plow, move them to the other side. We got some new vehicles out there in elements, like to get them under the garage that way.
So with the, sorry to interrupt, but are you gonna build the garage now that you've discovered the surplus?
We're looking at, we're currently going out for bids for it right now.
So with that, 2.2% over our 20%, I provided a recommendation to the SMEC board on how I wanted to use that, that garage would be part of that. So we have $111,000 in that fund. Then, with 2.2% that we have, I asked for 100,000 of that be set aside for facility maintenance and improvement. So I'd like to use part of that for that, since this is something that's gonna benefit all of our member districts, not SMEC directly, because you guys are contracted and legally responsible to transport the students. So by us doing that, we're taking a burden off you. Then, we also would look at using some of the ALC revenue that we set aside for improvements there. We would use that to cover any of the difference for that. So that's what we're looking at as far as building that way. So that's our hope. We had to get a variance on our easement and our setback, we got that. So we should be good to go, have bids, and I'm hoping to be able to do something in the spring if the board agrees to the financing. Staff and programs, like John Mark says, we're growing. Both at the ALC and the Level 4, there is a waitlist. So again, we do wanna build these pockets of money so that we can eventually add on to our Level 4, add on to our ALC. We have plans drawn up for addition of shops and lab space in our ALCs, but we also know we have to save up the money in order to do that, so we're not coming back here. So that's what we've been working on and putting money aside for that. Other updates, looking at, there are other districts that are interested in joining the co-op. That has been brought to our SMEC board and to our cabinet. We look at each one of those individually, but I do think it's beneficial for us to have additional schools with us. SMEC Career Expo, I don't know if Aaron's talking about that or not, but that's May 17th. That's a career day that we put on with, held at the ed center. All seven districts come, and it's looking at different careers, colleges, military, different, basically, transitions for our students from school to work, or school to college, or vocational, or school right into the workforce. So that'll be there. Really wanna focus on our local employers. So again, we've reached out to each one of the districts' counselors and admin so that we're getting businesses from Leroy represented over at that SMEC Career Day because we have seven districts graduating students that are looking for employment there. Other than that, I think that's all I have. I'll take any questions that the board has for us.
So you talked about having a waiting list, and then talked about the possibility of adding more school districts, right? Which would increase your waiting list, really. So what kind of timeframe are you looking at for an addition to your facility?
So I would look at, so when I look at the addition of the garage I look at now, that's in spring, and I feel like we have the funds to do that. When I look at the addition to, my next one that I would look at is specifically the addition to the SMEC ALC side. We would do it section by section. That would come about when we have the funds, really. As soon as we have the money in the bank to do it, I wanna move forward with it because then we can bring in additional students. Additional students bring in additional revenue, so...
But based on the amount of money that you've got, as far as, you know, your general fund exceeding your expenditures...
I would say in the next three years, the bid that we had on our...
We had a quote for around a million dollars for, just to kind of doing a cost per square foot analysis on the expansion of about a million dollars. And we were looking at what kind of, you know, there's a requirement right now about storm shelter per student, and we were looking at that, what we could do without triggering some of that. And so kind of looking within our means, what can we do? And also looking long-term, we're gonna have to comply with that requirement, and we're gonna have to add something, and that's where the cost per square foot goes up by about $100 once you add a storm shelter section. So we were looking at, you know, how can we start saving for that, knowing we're gonna have to do that? But also, what can we do now just to increase the number of students we can have in our facility?
Basically, the plan that you have would add shops and a food lab and CT program. So, that is the space that you're looking at. And based on that space, we wouldn't have to make it as a storm shelter so we could get the most bang for our buck. If we were gonna put the same space in and call it classroom space and set it up as a classroom, the cost goes up.
Yeah, it was about an extra $100 per square foot, so then it would be, sit in 900 something toes.
The graph is on the other side, if you wanna take a look at that. That's also there, so you can see what we're looking at there. Other questions?
So, if you would have another district join in, what, how do you figure what their cost would be to join?
Their cost is actually spelled out in the joint powers agreement, so that spells it out. So any district that would join us would have to pay their fair share of the debt based on the formula that's already set forth. So when you look at it, they have a percentage that is based on student population, and then there's a base amount that all districts pay. So as soon as they would join, they would have to pay part of that cost. Other questions?
Okay.
All right, thanks, we'll be around.
Thank you.
Anybody out there has any questions, we can stick around and answer them for you also.
All right, thank you so much. All right, we are ready for Tina Hoffman's staff report.
All right, so what I wanted to put on is one of our projects we're working on in grocery now. We have started one of the first grade's probably most favorite projects of the year. We have our life cycle project going on, so we have eggs in the incubator in our classroom. We are talking about the needs that those eggs have right now versus the needs they'll have as they get older and once they've hatched. We talk about how the chicks will be similar, different from both the parents and as the baby. We incorporate writing into it because the kids are going to be writing about the little chickens once they hatch, how it happened. One of the things that we worked on today was data collection with our chicks. We went through and cannedled all the eggs, and the kids started writing down the data so that they could tell how many eggs they think are going to hatch versus how many they don't think are growing at this point. And I was surprised, they're like, can we do that again tomorrow? We wanna collect data again. And they were so excited to get the data because they wanna make a graph at the end and see if it changes, or see if their predictions were right. So it's a lot of fun for them, but they're pulling from so many different areas because we have science, math, writing. But to them, they look at it as, oh, this is just a fun project where we can tap baby chickens in our room. And the things they get from it, each morning, we have these eggs that we open up, and inside the eggs, it shows what the chick looks like at this time. So like, the first day we open one, it looks just like our eggs at home. And we talked about the fact that if they took their eggs from the refrigerator, that they wouldn't be able to actually grow chickens out of them. We've had that happen a couple of years, where some of them have thought, if I put that egg under light, they could make anything grow. Today, one of our discussions was about how, we talked about how the chicks needed heat, or the eggs needed the heat to be able to grow and hatch into chicks. And started talking about, how is that different from the eggs we have in our room versus the eggs that are out on the farm? And how are those eggs gonna hatch? Because they're not in an incubator that's at a constant temperature. So to see them sit there and think through that process and come up with an idea of how they thought that was happening was really neat, when all of a sudden, somebody goes, wait a minute, there's moms there. And then somebody else goes, well, why? And then it just kept spiraling to the conversation of, oh, they're gonna sit on the eggs so the eggs stay warm. And so, then somebody goes, well, our eggs play music every so often because our eggs are on a Turner, and the Turner plays music. So then they were trying to figure out how the Turner was gonna work. And they decided that when the mom was moving, it was moving the egg around, so that was the same concept. So just to think out those different things and have them come through those processes, it's so much fun to listen to them think through it and have their ideas. I know they're all excited for Hatch Day, which is already next week, so... And it is streamed on our school YouTube page, so anybody can go in and watch them hatching. Dylan sets that up for me and helps keep all that updated to make sure our camera feed doesn't crash. And it works really nice because we've had years where the eggs have hatched when we weren't at school, because maybe it was a snow day, or somebody got up at 6 o'clock in the morning and saw there was an egg moving, and I've gotten a text message or a call or an email saying, we think they're gonna come. And so they're checking them all the time, and it is keeping them really engaged with the project even when they're not in the building. So I can't thank Dylan enough for that help. Any questions about our project?
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
I'm guessing our student is playing basketball.
She gave me notes.
Okay, very good.
I will read notes for you. Yes, she is playing basketball, so she apologizes. She gave six items today. So the first one is, second semester started today for the students, in terms of academics. The One Act Play concluded, they received third place at subsections this past Saturday, which is pretty exciting. Leadership Academy, the meeting is going to be held in, the next meeting is going to be held in February to start planning some spring events for that group. Basketball playoffs start the end of February, prom is April 29th, so that's coming up rather quickly. And then also, she mentioned that spring sports are also coming up, so kind of look for those schedules coming out, but we have baseball, softball, golf, and track to look forward to. There you go.
All right. Erin, we're on to the principals report.
All right. First of all, I just want to talk about the One Act Play a little bit. I went up and watched them perform on Saturday. They were awesome. It was, it was really awesome what they did, it was really cool. They got third place in the subsection. First two go on to, first two places go on to section, and we are the alternative if somebody falls out, but for only our second year of doing it, I'm pretty proud of those guys. So I just want to put a big shout out to Benita Nolt, Candace Hansen, Mia Lowe, Ashlyn Ness, Katrina Main, Xander Farlinger, Lindsay Bergen, Max Rayburn, and then the two staff members, Chrissy Schuman and Dawn Holmquist, who helped them with that, so...
Where was that held?
Rochester, Auburn Rochester. So just wanted to make sure they got the recognition, because that was pretty cool. And like I said, I think there's only two seniors, so hopefully the rest will return, and we can start adding that our goal is to have them perform to the school, so all the kids can see, and I think they're doing a community performance as well, I hope so. So I want to make sure that, I talked about those guys, that was really cool. Second thing, I'm doing a lot of thinking on our, how to promote our school. I'm working on a brochure, it may seem a little, maybe old school, it's not technology, but it's paper, but I think it's something that, I think it'd be easy for us to distribute restaurants, gas stations, you know, I don't know if we drop them on the floor in Quick Trip in Spring Valley, or how we get those out there. But I didn't print copies for everybody yet, because I'm still in the process of making sure all the data is correct, but basically, I'm putting all our offerings, talk about our preschool, talk about our community ed, our autism center, our cards program, our ECFE, a little bit about the town of Leroy, a little bit about the surrounding townships and the populations, and then some contact information. So eventually, hopefully, I'll have this, and if anybody wants to, maybe more creative, make it look cooler or something, I would be willing for help, and I am trying to put that together, so we can promote and advertise ourselves with that, so hopefully we can get that done this spring. Some other things I wanted to kind of address throughout, we talked about the art position a couple of months back, and since that discussion, I've been doing some networking, talking to others, looking at our, what our budget, our master schedule. To do it this year, just wasn't with the budget constraints we had and the master schedule being done. However, I did talk, I do have someone that is interested, and she's, she works, she does the, it's Dawn who works down at, has the art shop and drama. She does not have a teaching license, but her, she could get a Tier 1. So in the meantime, I have to post that position for 60 days. If we don't get a licensed teacher, then I can interview her. So I am very confident we will have a art teacher in place moving into next year. You guys hopefully will approve the hiring of Dawn as a paraprofessional for the remainder of the year, so she can get in the building. She's already helped with the One Act Play, but get in the building and meet staff and kids and see how that works out. So we've been in contact, Dawn and I have had several conversations about how this is going to play out if we don't get a licensed teacher, she'd be willing to do that. So pretty exciting to be able to, like I said, almost positive that we'll get that filled for next year. I want to post this position February 1st, because along with that, and Dawn knows that we'll be posting for a licensed teacher, but I'm going to Winona State University on February 9th to interview student teachers, so it'd be great timing with that opening. And then I believe it's the 15th or 16th of February, I'll be going to another student teacher seminar. So a lot of networking and getting out there, so I'm going to be posting that on February 1st. I will come back to you guys at a later date with a couple more after I talk to, after me with Jen and Christie first, and talk about our budget for next year. There's a couple more positions I would like to ask your guys' opinion on or approval on, if we can fit that in the budget. Any questions about that?
I do have one quick question. Last year, did we lose our art teacher? And...
Partway through the year.
Where did that piece of budget go?
Well, we had posted all of...
I know, but where did the budget, so we had a teacher, we obviously had money to pay that teacher, and then we didn't replace that teacher.
We added the STEAM to it.
Or STEAM.
Yeah, but we didn't add that, we didn't add that purposely for art.
That was...
That was a totally separate decision.
We had STEM, but we had, we had him pick up the art positions.
Pick up the art.
I know, but where did that piece of money go? You're saying now, we don't have the, we don't have it in the budget to have an art teacher, but we had an art teacher.
Well, when they had the budget, and that's not my spot, so I can't give you details on what, I was just where it was with the budget that came out.
Maybe that's what was told to you, that we can't look for a teacher because we don't have the budget for it?
Well, we couldn't really fit it. The other part was the master schedule piece of where, what do we take kids out of to put in there? If I would have posted it this year, we still would, and we still had, would have posted it 60 days, and then if Dawn would have did it, then I would have posted another 60 days moving into next year.
That's okay.
So there's a lot of moving parts.
We can do postings, they don't cost us any money to post, right?
Yep, so I'm going to post it on, yep.
Okay. But I, I mean, do you understand the question I'm asking?
Yeah, I know what you want to find out.
Well, I mean, we had an art teacher. We had a budget for that art teacher, that art teacher left. Why do we not still have a budget for an art teacher?
It's on the general fund, and so it went to the STEM, but what I can do is lay out the line.
But when we talked about the STEM, you did not, we brought that up, that was brought up, not in conjunction with, let's let go of an art teacher, let's build a STEM, no. We talked about building STEM in addition.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, I don't want, I feel strongly about that.
Yep, and what I can do, no, yep, oh, absolutely, you're asking great questions. What I can do is give you basically the line items from when the art teacher was there. Is that kind of what you're looking for versus the line items when there's no art position?
Line items?
Of the budget. Line items of a budget, because then you can see where that money is. And it's right out there. So I can do that. Yes.
For sure.
Okay, for sure. All right, I interrupted you, so go on now.
That's okay.
That's budget.
All right, so, and then, oh, I know there's been some questions, and some of this may or may not, I mean, you guys may not know all the things I do, and you probably don't. But we talked about holding teachers accountable, I've heard this statement. Some of the things, just so you guys are aware, that I do throughout the year. I have a teacher observation cycle set up with the evaluations. I do walkthroughs, so, and I do classroom visits, we do peer reviews. We did change to our weekly missing assignments this year, so that requires all the teachers to have their grade books in the middle school, high school updated weekly. Intervention time for the students, all teachers, I have had them available before and after school, Monday through Friday. We adjusted the schedule to make sure they are all there for the kiddos. PLC groups meet two times a month for each group, there's four groups that I attend. We have creating the curriculum based on our state standards, which they are working together on, staff development days, one-on-one meetings, and reviewing lesson plans. So those are some of the, those are the things that I do, along with any other staff development days we may have on any initiatives we have throughout the year. Along the line of this, our school philosophy is based on our pride, you see the pride posters up around the building, along with responsibility centered discipline. These are both across pre-K-12, and it is an expectation that all staff trained in those, as we do have training in staff development on those. Along with that, talking about responsibility centered discipline, we are the first school in the state of Minnesota to be identified as a model school for responsibility centered discipline. I feel we, that, I feel that that is a very big accomplishment, and we're being innovators and leaders of this, and I just, I want to, I need to promote that better. I don't do a good job, I guess, of tooting my own horn on some of these things, so I really need to get that out there of things like that. I'm going up to the state conference again Thursday, Friday. That company is always up there, and I always speak at their breakout sessions to teachers around, and actually principals around the state, so our name is out there on that. So that's something we need to be proud of. Let's see here. Oh, curriculum. Right now, our two science teachers have been collecting samples from companies to share with the elementary staff. They will decide together on what direction to go. We are hitting, the initial price tags are extremely high, but we will see how it works out. We have asked for some repricing, and stripping down of some of the things, obviously, they give you the big Cadillac version first, and then you've got to find your way around these things. And then we'll be working on that this year. And the English Language Arts teachers and elementary staff have been working on creating their own updated curriculum. They are following state standards, creating their own grade-specific curriculum. They have a skeleton to plan to follow, so all grade levels will be consistent with certain strategies or skills. The second year of that plan will be, will consist of making sure transition from one grade level to the next is consistent and free-flowing. They will have their curriculums created and turned into me for review by June 30th this summer. And then we'll continue on next year. I do have a 10-year curriculum cycle that I created based on the MDE and their anticipated standard changes. We review and add supplements every five years, and look at major upgrades every 10, and I will share with that at a later date. I do have all these, if anybody wanted to see it today, but I was really just going to introduce these things, and then bring these things, and have everybody can have a copy at a later date when we can go into a little bit more detail. But I have our curriculum based on MDE's curriculum for the next 10 years. I'm going to back up just a little bit, too, if anybody's interested, I do have our Marzano framework for my teacher evaluations I do, which includes 60 items. I also have my walkthrough forms, if anybody's interested, to see how I analyze that, along with our individual growth and development plan that teachers get put on when they're on their evaluation cycle. And I have the peer review observation form, and then we have to make an option, if teachers do not want to be evaluated, they must do a portfolio requirement, it has from the state. So we take, we also have that, and it's all on our website under our, well, it's our shared drive for the teachers, so they have all that. But if anybody is curious about sitting down talking about those things, curriculum, or any of those things, or the teacher evaluations, please let me know on those things. I do want to do a field trip sometime with you guys, just so I can show you some of the good things we did in the building. We have the new performance center, a health classroom, the athletic training room, we moved the concession stand, we cleaned and reorganized the fax room, school, in-school solutions room. The stage is just the stage, however, we do need new lights and curtain, hint, 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 you guys. And then we did add, we added an organized storage for the following, Cardinal Kids, Cardinal Care, Prom, NHS, Drama, Athletic Teams, Cheerleading, ECFE, and Community Education all have better, secure areas to store things, where they can keep track of those things. And the last thing I want to talk about is some of the things we offer students. Once again, I want to get these things out there, they, I oversee these, I assist with them, I document them, I schedule them, I attend these. We have special ed program, we have 504 plans, Title I, targeted services, tutoring, intervention time, seat time, elementary math interventionist, reading corps, summer school partnership with SMEC, and SMEC Academy partnership with SMEC. So just a lot of things I wanted to make sure we get out there. I need to do a better job of making sure that people are aware of those things, because we have those. If anybody's interested in getting more detail or want to sit down with me, my door is always open, and I would love to go more in depth on a lot of those things, but I wanted to touch base just on those things tonight, to see if anybody had any questions for me.
Thanks, Erin.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions?
I started that as a letter to you guys, because I thought, because I know talking at you something, but, so I do have a letter form, I may send it out just so you guys have that, so you can see it. And I was, it's something I was thinking about instead of just talking at you guys, because now you're like processing a million things. I would like if I, when I get a lot of information like that, is maybe just, if you guys, maybe if I just send a letter out, so you guys have it in writing, so you're not like, what did he talk about again? So just for you guys.
But it's good to also do it here, so that the community, the rest of the community can hear what you're doing as well.
So any questions?
I just have one little question, and that was, what are the times in the morning and afternoon that the kids have, where the teacher, where they have contact with, what was that called?
Intervention time.
Intervention time.
And it's the 15 minutes right before the bell rings, and 15 minutes right after the bell rings.
So like, what?
So 7:55 to 8:10.
Okay.
And then 2:49, to be exact, like 2:49 to 3:05, or something like that.
All right.
And the buses wait, the buses don't leave until, because elementary then gets dismissed at 3, and then buses are out there, and so kids have that time to get in.
So if they have, if they need to see a teacher, the bus will not leave them behind?
Yeah.
Okay, buses leave at 3:05, or a little after?
Well, as soon as, you know, as soon as elementary gets out there, they're really good about waiting, and waiting till everybody's out there, so...
All right, thank you. Okay. Anybody have any other questions? All right, thanks, Erin. And moving on to superintendent part.
Yes, a quick thing, we will have a building tour in February. So where are your walk-in shoes? So we are going to check out Erin's things, Trevor's things, my things that we did for the building, and we really want to show them off to you, and for our community, too, if anybody shows up, where are your walk-in shoes? We want you to come with. Let's see, I'll start with some good news, we received a technology grant. Thank you to our technology director, him and I had some, most recently had some pretty deep discussions, as Dylan can attest to, about kind of the needs of our district, and how we can move forward technology-wise, make sure our students are within the 21st century and getting moving in the right direction. Many of you have the old iPads, so you're running off those, well, our students don't have to do that anymore. We received a $52,000-plus grant. With that money, we're going to start with 180 iPads. Now, with the excess money, it still has to go to some sort of technology base within the classroom, so I'll let you know more about that once we get approval of all the creative things we're going to do. But we're pretty excited about that. And one of my emails I sent you recently, I sent you that document of the grant that we received, so that was in front of you. Our final, we went, we had two LED project walkthroughs. Our last one was just held January Tuesday night, January 17th, with the Building Grounds and Safety Committee, as well as the TRC installer representative. All went really, really well. We double-checked the work, see if there was any needed or necessary tweaks that we had to do with the project. We confirmed the lighting levels, we changed, we had changed out a set of bulbs, because it was flickering too much, and then actually, sometimes it would go out. In that initial walkthrough, they changed that out, so then the final walkthrough was all taken care of. Also, they helped a little bit with me with the rebate preparation paperwork, so that was a huge help. Davey, you were on that tour, Erin, you were too, did I missing anything with that? Okay. So keep in mind, too, our final billing payment for that LTFM, so when you look at our budget, we will not get billed until July 1, that's our next fiscal year, so that's, that's how we approve that project, so we've already made sure of that. Earlier, Chairwoman Rayburn mentioned we have a couple positive, more positive things happening. As a matter of fact, Mr. Hungerholt received an email from a Lanesboro teacher about a, and I sent that off to the board, but just so the community is aware, we're of course very proud of our students, but it's nice to hear it from other communities, too. But the band teacher was extremely impressed with our junior high basketball players, and how polite they were at the game, how they commented so highly on the band performance of Lanesboro and all that, and she wanted to make sure we know what good kids they were, so that was the first one. The second one, actually, I just got this morning, as a matter of fact, so I didn't send it off to all of you, so this is new to you. But Mr. Carrier, as our AD, received an email from Schaefer Academy, thanking him and our basketball teams for doing such a great job of recognizing a student athlete, who, she got her 1,000th point, and so we did make a big deal out of it for her, and recognized her as if she was actually at her own home site. And so that very much is laid out in this email that we received, too. So again, kudos to our staff and to our students, we're doing pretty good things there, I tell you. Okay, bear with me here, I'll keep going. Let's see, oh, I put this out in an email, and this is for our community as well, but we are tackling that website, it's kind of been an eyesore for me coming into the district. I didn't send, I did send off a couple links of the website for all of you to check out. Now, keep in mind, it's an ever-evolving, changing project, but you're going to see more and more changes as we go, so check back to that. Eventually, we will let our entire community know as a whole... Eventually, we will let our entire community know as a whole of the changes, so then they can, you know, log on, click in, and start kind of navigating through it. So that communication will come out as soon as we feel it's appropriate and we have enough, I guess, corrections made or how we like to see it. So, but keep checking it out. Let's see here. Moving on to, oh, over winter break, I obviously have no life, but I was given the opportunity to write a wellness grant, and I know I had mentioned this before, but I wrote a wellness grant, and sure enough, this is for our physical, mental, and social wellness of our staff members here in the district. It's a $3,000 grant, but we're going to start looking at that. What can we do with $3,000? Maybe not a whole lot, but enough to maybe jumpstart something. At least we got our name in there, and I can keep applying for that for all of you, so that was fun. I'll get into this a little bit later, but our spending bills are coming out in terms of Congress, and I'll get to that in a minute. So I Love to Read Month is February. Deb, you probably did a lot with that, your time here, kind of a fun thing. If any of you, if any of you don't see Erin and I are in our office some days, oftentimes, as Tina might be able to attest to, or Jill is here, I think, too, yep, they've seen us in classrooms. We do like to read in February and really pronounce the importance of literacy. As a matter of fact, Erin didn't send this out to you guys, but he's been working on some of our literacy stuff in terms of curriculum, the pillars of literacy, the importance of literacy, and how it is completely embedded in absolutely every single discipline that we have in every school, district, across the nation. And so he's really working on that, too, in terms of curriculum. You guys know this, two job descriptions, I, every year, and this is especially for our new membership. Every year, I like to meet with departments related to job descriptions. So I won't, of course, meet with every single teacher, but I will meet with the teacher representatives to go through their job description if anything changes. Now, keep in mind, that's an odd example because I take from the State Department on that one. That one's a little different. But anyway, I meet with people. So as a matter of fact, we have met with, I would say, three staff members so far in terms of their job description. We're going to make some changes. So if they're minor changes, such as wording it as may, may not, things like that, I won't come forward to you. But if we feel they are significant enough, you will be reviewing them, and I will be recommending approval. But that approval is based off all of us sitting down together vetting the process. I won't bring it forward otherwise. So you'll have that. Let's see here. Oh, don't forget, W-2s are out now, so all of you can click on to that. If you have questions on how to receive your W-2s, or if any staff member does, please feel free to contact me, and I can send you the how-to. We did a screenshot for our staff, Kristi and I did last year, on how to retrieve that document, and I can always send it off to all of you, too. So just let me know on that. Also, please, if you have not, especially as board members, sometimes, most of you are parents, so. But if you have not signed up for Emergency Communication System, let me know, and we can get you signed up for that, so then you can get the early morning text messages and phone calls. Maybe not as early as Mr. Hungerholt and Mr. Stockdale get from me, but you will get them early. So don't forget to do that. I'm going to piggyback kind of off what Erin was talking about with curriculum, too. I wish we could focus on curriculum instruction every single day. It is one of my most favorite things, being an educator, is the tool our teachers get to use in terms of instruction. I did not make copies either, but anytime you want to stop in and see all the fun things we're doing, let me know. But this is a, basically, a English Language Arts scope and sequence template. Scope and sequence, that's kind of an old saying back in the 70s and 80s. Jill, want to jump in on this one? But I love it. You know it's the best one, right? A scope and sequence model. But I guarantee, but they're going to say it is the best model that ever came out of, in terms of curriculum balancing. So it's how deeply you speak and teach of something, and how and when you do it. And so this template, we're going to start using in terms of, hey, what am I doing every day? Do I like what I'm doing every day? What is working, what isn't? So this is something I created that we think is going to be supportive of the teaching piece of it, the learning piece of it, but how are we moving forward in terms of the standards that are coming, in terms of the demands from the State Department? But also, what is our community demanding? What do they want to see from our English Language Arts Department, as an example? So anytime you want to, it maybe isn't exciting to a lot of you, but it's exciting for me. So if you want to come in and check it out, we do work on curriculum every day. So here's one thing. Another piece of curriculum, as a matter of fact, we just did today. This is really cool to get for me. And of course, I had to jump in and respond right away. Normally, superintendents wouldn't, but I had to. Carrie Olson sent out an email about IXL. Remember, we've talked about IXL. That is a tiny assessment component, assessment that we use on a daily basis, if we so choose, or weekly basis, in terms of how our kids are doing, right? It's an assessment piece. And so Carrie had talked about in her email, they want to use data to drive their decisions on daily lesson plans, but also student goals. Can't get any better than that, folks, can't get any better. But what we need to do is, we constantly are telling the teachers how important it is that student data is not secret. We want our students to know what's going on. We want them to know where they stand. And so this IXL, we are having communications, if you want a copy of it. I did make copy of these because this is pretty cool. We are having conversations with our, not only our teachers, department-wise, maybe even, you know, big picture-wise, but we are also digging deeper and really having our students own what they're learning. Our students ask questions. You know, if you're going to practice, if, if you, if you're a coach and you want to talk about winning, you have to lay out a practice plan to win. And the students need to know, well, what's in that practice plan? Well, it's the same as a classroom. They need to know how to be successful. And so that's what we're trying to do, is really dig deep. So if you want anything here, let me know. I even found a graph for them to use, so anyway, it's right there if you want it. So there's that. That's the IXL stuff. Just a second here, I apologize. I have one more. Oh, speaking of staff, we will continue to do the staff spotlight. I hope you guys like that. It's kind of fun getting to know our staff that way. We may have to open it up to board members, too, by the way, so don't think you're out of it or something. Coaches, too. Ashley. So anyway, but staff spotlight, you guys will be a part of it. Next month, in, or I'm sorry, in March, we will have Barbie Tiller is, has been chosen as a staff spotlight. So take a peek at that. I haven't sent it out yet, but you'll be able to see that. Let's see here. Ooh, fire, our fire inspection report came back with flying colors. So little things here and there, such as, oh, we're missing a three-prong cord here and there, or, oh, we have something hanging from the ceiling, make sure you take that down. You know, all those things, those are normal things we find almost every single report and inspection. But overall, great report. If ever you want to see these reports as well, we do file them. If we cannot find the file, I always have them online. So anyway, let me know if you ever want to see those, too. Let's see here. Kind of fun, somebody had mentioned at one point, and you hear this often in districts you go to, that people sometimes are in fear to come in and talk to administration or talk to our teachers. Last week, as a matter of fact, I did a tally, and I made sure I was accurate on the numbers. Mr. Hungerholt had five parents, not parents that are employees here or anything like that, come in and speak with them. And I had four, including one member who wanted to know about free and reduced lunch programming. So we, I can't stress it enough, never have we denied a parent to talk to them or a community member to talk to them. They are always welcome. We do not live in an ivory tower. We want to talk to people. There are things we're not going to know, so come and talk to us, tell us. And please, all of you, if you could also be our advocate and stress that and be our poster child for us. We really appreciate it, too, because it's been, it's been really, really good. Let's see here. Oh, finally, and I know this is kind of not so fun, fun to talk about, but it's a session update. Some of you probably get this through MSBA, but we also get it through MASAR, Guiding Institution. It's a school administrators institution, or guiding, or guiding institution. And I like to, just for the new membership, I like to either share it in an email or present it at board meetings for you. But a couple of things you guys need to know, especially dates to remember. March 10th is a big one that I, as your superintendent, look, look at, and I'm sure Dan would attest to this, too. But this is when our legislative committees act favorably on bills in the House of Origin, meaning that's going to get pushed forward, and then we're going to see some action taking place. So we watch that March 10th time. And then basically, we do not like the April 5th through 10th because that's their break. We don't feel they deserve a break. They need to get stuff done for us because it gets too close to our budget season. But just know that time is pretty quiet, those five days. But then, the last day of the legislative session is usually late May. This year, it's going to be May 22nd. So once that happens, just like Dan, we're going to be looking for those bills coming out and how it's going to impact us locally. So some things that I think you might want to know about will include the 17, and you've heard about all of this, of course, but the $17.6 billion budget, billion-dollar budget surplus. Currently, the governor is looking at a 4% increase on our student aid. Again, that's what he's looking at, but does not mean we're going to get it per se, or even, or it may mean we may get it in three years, next year, 10 years, we don't know. We don't know any of that, but I know that's on the table. Let's see here. Also, there's things such as updating the transportation sparsity revenue projection. That would be awful nice for us, being, we are a rural community. Dan's shaking his head, that's a big one. We're all looking at that. We want the money. So that's a big one. I mentioned the General Education Basic Formula Allowance. Right now, they're sitting at that 4%. At one point, we did hear 5%, highly unlikely. But if we could get that 4%, it would be great because it does link to the inflation costs. We do have costs that inflation has really hurt us, you know, just like all of you in your personal homes here, too. A lot of the modifying of the lead testing, asbestos testing, things like that, that's all going to change now. They feel like that's kind of moving forward. School districts are really cleaning that up, and we have done a great job here. As a matter of fact, we could be a model school for that. You know, they're looking at, of course, curriculum things, cross subsidies for special education, ELL students. You know, this is on the docket, providing free meals to all our students. You know, that's coming, so I'll let you know about that. Adding money in just a regular line item for school support personnel. So our paraprofessionals, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, all those support personnel, possibly some tagged money just for them, so we're watching that, too. I will continue to keep you updated. If you have questions about any of that, let me know. I try to get on weekly, if not every other week, to a large superintendent group webinar. Some of you have walked in my office, and I'm online there. It's only like for an hour I'm on, but I gain a lot of data from that, and I try to get that out, too, as much as I can. So we do have that. Keep in mind, too, with our budget, yes, we, there are times where it's not looking real good, but don't worry. Just last week, we got our OPEB money, which is a huge dollar amount that you did not see early in the year, and you shouldn't have. It always comes out this time. Also, keep in mind with our budget, that half-million-dollar grant I received, that's nowhere to be found, but that all has to do with lowering class sizes, getting new capitals, capital items such as desks and chairs. That all goes right into our budget, so that's not identified yet. All of that will be. Keep in mind, too, the state did not pay us in December because they had two weeks off for Christmas break. So that money does not come until January. So anyway, those kind of things, too, keep that in mind as you're hearing maybe from others in the committee, oh, your budget, this, that. No, we are ever-evolving, we're always changing. I don't have a lot of worries right now. I know, I know you guys have been on a cycle of some cuts here and there, and then we go back up again, and then cuts, and then go back up. And that's pretty common, as Dan and John Mark talked about. That's just what you do. That's how you live your life in education. But as I've done, I've always come forward to tell you what that may be, whether in an email or, you know, through this communication avenue, too. But ask questions. Deb had a great question tonight. Let's talk about it. We have nothing to hide. We're going to talk about it. We're going to talk about it. So please do that. Please do that. Let's see. I think that's it. I did send an email off today, if you didn't see it, about the weather, the possible negative 30-degree wind chill. Please dress warm. Please also check your emails and other communication avenues if we decide to do anything as a group.
On that line, have they thought about moving the ski trip again? Means that that's Wednesday morning.
Yeah, we've been talking about it.
It'd be tough to come out of this temperature by Wednesday.
Yeah, we had talked about it. We're going to have to reach out to them tomorrow, see what, I mean.
Someone who's done that trip, if you, if they do not go, it probably will not be done this year.
Yeah.
They are, they're pretty lucky to get a date, just, just say.
Well, yeah, it's already been rescheduled once, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they.
Yep.
So they can accommodate, could you reach out to the one in Mankato?
They don't offer the cost. I mean, we get it for, I don't know what it is right now. 20?
29.
29, yeah. I was going to say like 25. And they don't do anything, and they don't do anything with the ski school, like Welch does. I mean, maybe there's other places to do it.
Yeah, it's a heck of a field.
It is.
I just prefer fall on when the snow is about 35 degrees.
A little softer?
Negative two. Right. Yeah, no, I figured that that was probably going to be getting tight.
Second week in March, or middle of March, the ski school thing does.
But you'll check.
We'll have to check it tomorrow, see how it works.
I just know that rescheduling was not easy.
I would assume they have some sort of guidance on what, when they're open and not open, too, with the temperature, so we'll call tomorrow.
Sounds good. All right.
That's all, thank you.
Any questions for Jennifer, anyone? All right, thank you so much. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. So we looked at, we received the January 9th reorganization meeting minutes. We'll be looking for approval on that. Approval on the January 18th special meeting minutes. The Treasurers' Reports, including the January Bills and December Wires, December Treasurer's Report and Bank Reconciliation, the Budget Summary, and the Student Activity Funds and Accounts. For fundraisers, the 2023 Junior/Senior Prom Quilt Raffle and Auction is going to happen this month until the end of next month. L.O. Trap Team concession stands at the Wykoff Sportsman's Expo, February 16th and 17th. The L.O. Trap Team Spring Certificate Raffle. That's it on those, okay? And then donations, the Leroy Commercial Club donated $200 for Breakfast with Santa for the books. Colleen Jennings Real Estate donated $100 towards Breakfast with Santa gift items. $8,000 worth of weight room equipment from Dan Quail of Minnesota Muscle. Cassidy and Lindsay Milk's donation of a Cardinal Fathead to the Performance Center. Kevin and Tracy Jansen for donating a countertop ice machine to the Performance Center. And Suzie Nagel for donating quilts to the Prom Committee for the fundraising. Under F Personnel, approve the resignation of Wendy Johnson, paraprofessional, effective February 1st, 2023. And approve the hiring of Dawn Holmquist, paraprofessional, starting February 1st, 2023, at $13.03 an hour per 2224 MSEA Master Agreement. Okay? Any discussion on any of those items? Any questions? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then it passes. All right, discussion, action items. So we're looking at the policy review and second reading of policies 601, 602, 603, 604, and 605.
Deb, would you like me to comment on some of these?
Sure.
Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
Okay, just, just because we did have a meeting in January, so I just want to update you guys a little bit on this and kind of what we talked about at the meeting. I remembered my notes this time, if you can believe it. So the first one, 601, school district curriculum and instructional goals. So this, yes, is a very important one, of course, to Erin and I, but to the entire, entire district and all of you. We did talk, we talked quite a bit about this, and as it relates to our strategic, strategic planning process. So that was really fun for us. We were able to bring it forward, talk to the committee about it. How did the, how did this policy relate to what we're doing in the classrooms, what we're doing in other policies related to curriculum, what we're doing with instruction, what Erin talked about tonight in terms of evaluation of teachers, things like that. So really great discussion, and the majority of our committee, of course, is teachers. So it was a really great, deep discussion on that. We do recommend the MSBA-approved policy that's in front of you tonight for that one. 602, organization of school calendar and school day. Of course, we really, really do have to follow state statute on this. What's been nice, though, however, being part of, I'll just call it, our SMAC consortium, where we have a group of schools that work together to build the school district calendar. So if we forget legislation, we know another group of administrators is going to remind us what the legislation is, because there's X amount of days versus X amount of minutes versus X amount of hours that we have to perform in front of children, and the kids have to be here. So that's part of it. One thing we did talk about, too, interestingly enough, with the recent COVID pandemic, we talked about e-learning and how this policy, local or statewide, possibly federally, could be impacted. So we did talk about e-learning with this one, so that was kind of interesting. We do have it in our current teachers' contract, so that's something this spring. Our certified negotiators will have to look at, do we want to continue to keep that in our local contract or not? But we will relook at this policy when we do negotiate that particular piece. But we do, of course, want you to approve that, too. Curriculum development, 603, as you know, Erin and I really, really love that. We are adding, in these discussions, we really talked about our world's best workforce. Kyle and Dave are our board members who are represented there. That is, I believe, next Wednesday night, the eighth? Okay, the eighth, yes, that's right. We will be meeting about our world's best workforce, so we meet twice a year. And so this will be our first meeting as we kind of wrap up this school year, but then go into next year. What is it going to look like for us in terms of curriculum, instruction, assessment? What are we doing? That literacy piece I just showed you tonight, you know, how is literacy embedded? So we'll be talking about that, but it does relate to this policy, what we are doing. 604 is instructional curriculum. This, we talked heavily about each, especially our high school teachers, in terms of syllabus or their syllabi that they provide to students. Again, we want students to know what they're learning, how they're learning, when they're learning, and I talked about that earlier, the scope and sequence. They need to be involved in their education. So we want to make sure through this policy, the instructional curriculum, teachers are doing just that. Are they providing, or at least sharing their ideas of their daily lesson plans? Are they establishing student goals? Carrie Olson just did in an email, what are they doing in math? They're establishing those student goals so they can look at IXL and establish different goals maybe the next week. So that's what that one's about. And finally, 605 is alternate educational services. This, of course, is through SMAC, our ALC, so we really didn't talk much about that. We just know we need to have that policy in place. It is mandated, not only through, MSBA recommends it, the state demands it. So with all of these second readings, I would recommend your approval on those, because we do need them.
Couple of things I'd like to mention is, is in policy 603. The school, District Advisory Committee, A. The school board shall establish an advisory committee to ensure active community participation in all phases of planning and improving the instruction and curriculum affecting state and district academic standards. And I know that we've had some discussions on this in the past that we do have world's best workforce. And whether that covers this adequately. To the extent possible, it should reflect the diversity of the district and the school, including teachers, parents, support staff, students, and other community residents. So if we're going to approve that, I think that we need to make sure that we are, I mean, it's listed here as our responsibility, that the school board has this advisory committee. And so are we confident, are we, does world's best workforce serve that? And do we have those different parts?
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Being the meeting is coming up next week, Kyle and Dave, is that right, you guys?
Yes.
They could present their thoughts to all of you on world's best workforce, the big PowerPoint I'm going to share and all the information you're going to get that night. Does it relate to them, if you'd like?
Does it cover, does it cover our responsibility?
As a board, right.
As a board. And do we have these, do we have these components?
Right.
Teacher, parent, support staff, students, and community residents. So you want to bring that back to us and say if it, if that covers our responsibility? Because if we adopt this policy, we, then we do need to be responsible.
Seems like it should.
And what I can do, too, is I will have a PowerPoint, and I can, I can show all of you, you know, I can run off the PowerPoint for you, too, so you can see what we talked about, and so you, too, can make an assessment.
Okay, and then also in 604, instructional curriculum. And I, I hear from your reports that you're doing lots of good work and lots of good things with that, so I appreciate that. In number, in, under general statement of policy, number two down in C, it says that elementary and middle schools shall offer at least three and require at least two of the following art areas, dance, music, theater, and visual arts. Okay, and I do know that you've, you have the A in STEAM now, but I just wonder if that is really, if we are really offering enough in the arts. It's, elementary and middle schools shall offer at least three and require at least two of the art areas, dance, music, theater, and visual arts. So maybe we can look into that a little bit and see.
Can I find data? Yes. Did you, six, you're talking about 604, is that correct?
604.
Very good.
Number two, C.
Very good.
But that really wouldn't affect our approval of the policy.
No, I, but it's something I wanted to.
It's fun to bring data, you like bringing data, though.
Well, and, you know, if we're, if we're going to approve it, if we, as a board, say this is what we want, then that is the policy we need to follow. So if, if we're going to approve it, then I want to be sure we're following it.
Have some corrective actions going to get it up to.
Yeah. So those are just what I wanted to mention.
Middle, middle school, that would go up to eighth grade, right?
Yes.
Then they're required to stay in music from fifth to eighth grade?
Seventh, I believe. They start depending, I would start getting a little bit of flexibility.
Okay.
But yeah, fifth, sixth, and usually seventh, you try to keep them in those, but.
Because they do both in fifth and sixth.
Yeah. I guess we could identify what we consider middle school, too.
We can pull this one. You don't have to approve it tonight. If you have more data, it's up to you guys. Totally up to you? Because it is, it's just a second reading, that does not mean you have to approve it. We go through policy twice at committee level, and it comes to you twice.
Yeah.
We have had, well, in my three years, probably two or three policies that we've brought back a third time. So, and what I would do, if you would pull this, table it, I would just bring it back to the committee for further discussion, gathering more research and data for all of you. I would obviously find, I would make sure the references are noted in my research and stuff for you, so you can be, you know, out there with anything.
All right, so how do we feel about that? Do we want to, do we want to pull that one out and put it back in for another review cycle?
604.
Yeah.
Or, oops.
It'd be all right.
How about the other one?
603.
Talking about the committee.
Yeah, should we do 603 and 604? Should we bring back to review?
I would recommend that, just because now, you know, we're, I want our board members to see what world's best workforce looks like.
Right.
To see, to see what they feel as board membership.
Yeah.
Is it reflective or not? You know, we want to make sure. So absolutely.
So maybe at this time, I'm looking for someone to make a motion to approve 601, 602, and 605.
I'll make motion to approve 601, 602, and 605.
And a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then, do we need to make a motion, then, to re-review 603 and 604?
Motion to table, and then you'll have to do an individual vote.
Okay. Motion to table 603 and 604. For further reviews? Okay.
I'll make a motion to table the second reading of 603 and 604 to be looked at at a future date.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we're looking at policy review. This is the first reading on 709, student transportation safety policy. 722, public data request and public data request forms. And 806, crisis management policy. And 903, visitors to the school building and sites. So those are our first readings on those.
Can I just add a couple of things to those?
Please, yes.
Okay, thank you. 709, student transportation safety policy and notification forms. On 2B3 in your policy, we did note that we only do bus safety one time a year. And that state statute, that's all we have to, so we do that. We do it on occasion if maybe a class needs it more than others. So we'll do that, but, but just so you know, we did have a pretty lengthy discussion about that. We also want information from our transportation director in terms of, does everything in that policy match what we have in our pink slips, our disciplinary slips that we give our students from the bus issues? So we are involving him in that discussion, too, and so we'll be bringing that back to our February, February committee meeting. We want his voice in that one. Let's see here, the only other, I would say, oh, discussion that we had, we had a really good discussion about 903, visitors to school district buildings and sites. What's helped a lot is our, kind of our, our front door emergency. It's, it's a very protected space now, and our staff is grateful for that. But our staff has done really great about wearing their ID badges, checking doors. We had a good, good conversation, Kai was at a meeting, actually, where I met with the entire staff recently about the importance of student safety, about talking, and their own safety. You know, let's talk about safety, let's, if you're feeling unsafe, call somebody, call Erin or I, talk to your peer, you know, check doors, wear your ID badges. If there is a stranger in the building, confront them, it's okay. Call us, we will confront them. So really good discussions are happening, and when I send my regular email out to the staff about safety, lots of responses, hey, Jen, you better check that door over by the concession stand, or, oops, somebody propped this door open. And so a lot of that is happening. So that, actually, that policy really prompted other discussion, which was really nice set after doing. So anyway, no changes with it, just a lot of good discussion. So if more changes come forward, though, I would like you to know.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion to accept the first reading of the policies 709, 722, 806, and 903.
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of 709, 722, 806, and 903.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we're going to go to 10B. This is where we removed out of the personnel, and this was just a question that we just wanted clarification on. And that was that, that the approved, the approval of hiring Nikki Bergen as co-prom advisor, twenty-two, the year 2223, and at $568, per the master agreement. And then, number two, approve the hiring of Ryan Evans as co-prom advisor, school year 202223, at 568 per the master agreement, 2123 master agreement. Okay, so the question was just, has this been done in the past? Or is this a new position?
Awesome question. Great question. Last year, we did have two, so a co-advisor position, so two people, former teachers who have left the district, they were our prom advisors. And prior to that, I don't remember, that was just my first year, so I don't remember. But they were there, I believe.
Yeah, it's usually been, it's been those two have been for the last couple of years.
They did, okay, okay.
So they, in the past, we have paid to have a prom advisor? Okay, all right.
I would assume that that's part of Schedule C in the contract.
Yeah.
I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it's prom advisor right there.
Huh?
The prom advisor's on the C schedule.
Okay, perfect, all right.
Say, I can kind of remember something about that.
I just couldn't find it on my, and so I didn't.
Well, if you're down here, you won't be able to get anything, so. Do it at home.
All right. All right, so that has been on the.
Yeah, it's on the C schedule.
I can look back to historically how long it's been to, if you want.
That's okay, I mean, we just wanted to see where it was and, and if it had been done, if it was, you know, separate from class advisors. Yeah. Because.
Sometimes it was attached to the junior class advisor, but there would still be a junior class advisor stipend and then a prom advisor stipend.
Okay, all right. Does that answer all of our questions for that? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Nikki Bergen as co-prom advisor for this school year at 568, per the master agreement, and approve, can I do them both together?
Sure.
Okay, and approve the hiring of Ryan Evans as co-prom advisor, school year 2223, at $568 per master agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve Nikki Bergen and Ryan Evans as co-prom advisors for school year 2223.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number 11, discussion and approval of the official school district newspaper. Currently, we have the Maurer County Independent. Any discussion regarding that?
I think there's another option.
I don't know. Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Maurer County Independent.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Number 12, discussion and approval of the 2023 pay equity report. I'm going to toss that back to Jen.
You bet, you bet. Okay, so in my notes, I mentioned to you that approximately. You bet, you bet. Okay. So in my notes, I mentioned to you that approximately every three years or so, school districts, and it's, it varies throughout the state. It might be, Lyle has to report out two years ago, and will again, you know, in a year from now. So we're all on different times. But up to three years, and what this is, it's a state law that requires all political subdivisions, including counties and school districts, create a rubric, they send us a rubric that we have to fill out to make sure that we have equity of pay across our staff in terms of gender specifically. And so in front of, or in your packet, you received our pay equity report. So that goes to the State Department. They look at that. If they feel an audit is needed, whether they randomly pick us, or whether they feel like, wait a minute, you are way over here, they will immediately call the business department and the superintendent's office, and we would have to go through the auditing with that. But at this point, we feel it looks rather healthy. And so, I would, I would highly recommend you approve it because you actually have to approve it. But also, it looks very good. So, all we do is run it through basically payroll and our budget, send it off, and then we go from there. See if we made it or not.
Okay. A motion to approve the 2023 pay equity report?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 pay equity report.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number thirteen, discussion and our action, high school scoreboard update.
Okay, folks, I'm bringing this back to you. In the notes I provided to you recently, actually, let me go back a little further if that's all right. So you may recall, I believe it was December, I could be wrong on the month, but we did approve to buy the six foot by ten foot, large, two large scoreboards. And we also approved buying the panels, the, basically the athlete information panels. So, name, number, amount of baskets, follows, whatever, right? Those panels. Well, we've continued to do some research on that. What I'd like you to do tonight, and feel free to open it up for our, for discussion, but my recommendation to all of you tonight, based off some research both Mr. Carrier and I have done, is to retract or rescind that motion of purchasing that entire set. Instead, make a motion to only purchase the six by ten, two six by tens. No panels is what I'm asking for. The reason being, and I would be asking why myself if I was all of you, the reason being is we feel like we cannot find workers for the panels. From what the information we're gathering, is it takes up to a year for a person to be trained in, in using those panels. And so, so of course, Mr. Carrier did his research with this local conference, and then I did some research in my own personal conference where I live. And that is a very consistent message we are hearing. We already want to support those people that do help us with the score clocks, with the, you know, the books, all of that. But we're struggling a little bit to get workers for those. And we want to make sure they're trained as best as they can be trained. We don't, surely don't want to set them up to fail. Again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't buy those at some point, but for now, I'd like you to rescind, so we can just purchase the big ones for now, but continue to come back to if we, if we need to buy those other ones. That's kind of where we're at right now, if that makes sense.
Because starting next year, we're gonna have to have one more person there just to run the shot clock.
Just for the shot clock alone, yes.
And then if you had to have somebody to run the side panels, then that's two more people needed.
And also, part of the Minnesota State High School statute, with those shot clocks, you cannot have that person run a second device. They have to solely be the shot clock, solely. And that, yes, we have to implement that next year.
We discussed this a little bit at the Building and Grounds Committee level. And, you know, there's discussion about, well, they're not gonna get any cheaper. Should we just go ahead with what we were, what our plan was to begin with? But, and then there was discussion that, well, if we don't, maybe that money can be used for something else, kind of a thing, you know what I mean? So, it was kind of a toss-up, I think, as far as what the consensus was on that committee, so.
Can refresh my memory, how much were the side panels?
Did we?
It seems like the total was right around twenty-five thousand for the whole thing.
Another fifteen thousand.
I've got the, yeah, fourteen five, just for the.
Just for the side panels?
No, no, this is the new.
The new quote.
The new quote.
Right.
Just with the six by ten scoreboard.
So they're about seven, eight thousand apiece.
And that's with a couple wireless controls and then the console.
So keep in mind, too, so we're just finding this out today, as a matter of fact. I wanted to make sure I had the correct data for all of you today from Mr. Carrier. I surely don't want to put words into his mouth. But he stopped down before he left today and said he just got off the phone with Ames Electronic, suggesting they cannot use our, any of our equipment right down in the gym. We have to get new. It is so old and so archaic, nothing is going to work. So, by rights, we do have to purchase the big ones right now, or we will not have anything. They have no, for example, the controller, they don't make those kind anymore. So there's nothing to make them better if they break down.
Not that old. I was in high school, I think, when those, when those got put in.
I said the equipment's old day. So, yeah, so it's, that's something reasonable to consider, how, how bad, and that happens, you know, electronics do become archaic and wear out. So.
Well, and that saves us about eleven thousand dollars right off the top.
Absolutely. And again, not to say we won't come back to you. And we may, or all of you can come to us and say, hey, do further research, get us those panels, how can you do it? Please do. But for now, we're just, we're thinking it's more of an HR issue than anything else.
And once you get the people trained, they have to commit to a lot of games, and we have to pay them.
Every game?
Every game.
Yeah.
So that adds up, that adds up.
It does.
I don't really see the value in having them hanging up there.
Well, and I wouldn't want to do that either. I don't want to spend money and not use them. I can't do that.
If we're not gonna use them, great.
Yes, that's, that's not right. That's not right.
Can we do this in one motion? We send the first one and make a motion?
I think we have to rescind first, don't we?
Yes.
We have to rescind and then make a new motion.
Yes.
Well, I move that we rescind the past motion relating to the scoreboards. I don't remember when that was, but.
I believe it was the December meeting.
I think so, too.
I'll second that.
November?
It was the November.
Was it November?
I'm sure.
Okay.
No.
Second, Kyle. Okay, second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Would someone like to make a, would we like to have any further discussion on the current proposal? For the, the new scoreboard controls? Totalling fourteen thousand, five twenty-three. Any discussion on? When you had that?
I move that we approve the purchase of the new scoreboards at fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars, as quoted.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. I would take, I would like to take the very briefest of breaks before we begin on number fourteen.
Ten minutes?
Oh, no.
Five.
Five is plenty. So we will take a short break and return back here at seven forty-five. We are now going to move on to discussion and possible action for the school board open seat appointment. All right, so, here are our guidelines for this next step. We receive the applications, and the board members have had a chance to review the applications. At our board meeting, we will now have a discussion. And if we want to talk about a candidate, we need to use the number that's on their form. So, we're not gonna use the candidate by name, we're gonna say candidate one, candidate two, whatever, to have our discussion. And then, after we've had a discussion, board members can nominate a candidate. And then.
Question. Once a candidate is nominated, will a vote be taken?
No. Each board member has an opportunity to nominate a candidate. And then, if they want to, if they so choose. And then, we will do a roll call vote in the order that the nominations happened.
So we could potentially be voting on four different?
And then, so, for clarity reasons?
Yes.
If, if a candidate is not, let's say there's three different ones nominated, and then we do a roll call vote on the first person nominated, are we looking for just how many are, are in favor of that candidate? Are we going in favor or against? And then, once we come up with a majority for one, is, is it over?
Okay.
And the other ones don't get a vote? How are you doing that?
That is, that is the way it's done.
Well, that's why I was wondering, if, if, if one candidate was nominated, then you vote. If it does, if that candidate doesn't receive the four votes, then you move on to another nomination, and like that.
No, no, first of all, you, first of all, you, each board member can nominate if they choose to. And then, we do a roll call vote in the order that they were nominated. And if the first person receives a majority vote, that ends it.
So we're basically doing the same thing, other than nominating more all at once?
Right.
Yep. Okay, any, is, are there any more questions on that? If, if we get to a point where there's a tie or some such thing as that, we can then move into having interviews at a different, at another time. All right? Anybody have any questions on that? All right. So, at this time, we are open for discussion about the candidates using only their number of their candidate, if you want to bring forth any thoughts.
Well, I guess at this point, I'd like, start the discussion, I guess.
Okay.
I like candidate number three, based on, based on experience largely. And also, that person ran last fall as well.
I wanted to bring forth candidate number two for discussion. Some of my reasoning is that this member would increase the diversity in, in that they have younger children, which we don't have a lot of on our board. Also, what I think is really important is knowledge of finance. And I know we have a lot of big financial decisions that we're always making. And so, I, I, candidate two, I thought, brought forth a lot of knowledge on finances. So, put that forth for discussion. Do you have any other further discussion? Okay, at this time, I will bring if anyone would like to nominate a candidate, based on the number, nominate the candidate based on the number.
I'll nominate number three.
Any additional nominations?
I will nominate candidate number two.
Any further nominations? For the final call, any further nominations? Okay. We'll, we'll now do a roll call vote. I guess I'll go based on this form that's here on our paper. All right, so, we are now taking a roll call vote to nominate the appointment of candidate number three. Page corner, okay. Okay. So, we are now taking a roll call vote for, for candidate number three. All right? Arndorfer, Pat?
No.
Lunning?
Yes.
Stern?
Oh, yes.
Farlinger?
Yes.
Rayburn, no. Bundy?
No.
Okay. So that is three and three. And so we will move to the next candidate. And candidate, we are now going to take a vote on whether we would want to appoint candidate number two. Okay, the vote is on whether we would appoint candidate number two. Arndorfer?
Yes.
Lunning?
No.
Stern?
Oh, no.
Farlinger?
No.
Rayburn, yes. Bundy?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We are currently at a tie, three and three for each of the votes. Do we feel like further discussion would be of value, or should we move to interview?
Well, I wonder if candidate number four would be, I don't know if you'd call it a compromise, maybe that's what you'd call it. Candidate number four is a former nurse, very intelligent, a small business owner in town. If it's proper, I guess I would nominate candidate number four for. If it's proper, I guess I would nominate candidate number four for...
I believe another person has to nominate it. Each person only can nominate one. So another, another board member would have to nominate.
My only reservation with candidate number two is the activity in the community and in, you know, extracurricular activities, what experience there's there, which isn't, isn't much. I mean, just kind of trying to justify why I voted against that.
That, like, not a lot of activity, or negative activity?
No, not negative at all, but just, not, not well-known in the community. And haven't seen any, you know, jumping out there to volunteer to do things, type of thing.
I went back and listened to the Q and A.
Yep.
that really spoke to me as to some of the strong, strong qualities for number two, which is what I, why I lean towards number two.
And I would have no problems, you know, with number four either, as far as that goes. I nominated number two because I thought he probably would come on to this board with no preconceived opinions of anything, and I think that's what this board needs.
And I think candidate number four would probably fill that, fit that bill as well.
I think they both would.
All right.
Somebody going to nominate number four? Somebody that didn't nominate?
Right.
Otherwise, I would do it.
I know, I know you would, but I, each board member...
I'll nominate number four. This person was part of the strategic planning meetings we had, and I was impressed with the intelligence and the ideas they had.
All right, would any, like, anyone like to have further discussion regarding possibility of candidate number four for appointment?
So as long as that's the one we haven't voted on yet, is that what?
That's what we would go to next, yes. Any further discussion? All right, so we are now going to take a roll call vote to appoint candidate number four. Okay, this is a roll call vote to appoint candidate number four. All right? Arndorfer?
Yes.
Lunning?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Farlinger?
Yes.
Rayburn, yes? Bundy?
Yes.
We all agreed on something.
All right, so now we have to do a... We have to do a resolution, okay? And this is what it looks like. We have to do the parts that are in yellow. So, resolution filling the school board vacancy by appointment, whereas a vacancy exists in the office of school board with the term expiring the first Monday in January of 2027, which would have been the end of the previous one. And whereas the vacancy occurred more than 90 days prior to the first Tuesday of the first Monday in November in the year of the vacancy occurred, and also prior to the fourth year of the vacant term, now therefore be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 499, state of Minnesota, as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota's statute, section 123B.09 subdivision 5B, the name Amanda O'Byrne is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy and to serve until a successor is elected and qualified. And that will happen, that will happen November 7th of 2022. We have to have an election. 2023, thank you, yes.
At which point, anybody can?
Everybody can reapply, run. And we have to put them on the ballot, ballot. And when they are, whoever wins that ballot immediately takes seat. Like, so they take seat right in December, they don't wait till the following year.
It'd be considered a special election because of that exact reason that Deb just said.
So, so hereby appointed to fill the vacancy and serve until a successor is elected and qualified. The appointment shall be effective 30 days after the adoption of this resolution, unless a valid petition to reject the appointee is filed with the school district clerk pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 123B.09 subdivision 5BB. And within that 30 days, so we have to make a public notice that this person is appointed, and then there's a 30-day waiting period before they start. Okay? All right, that is a resolution. Does anybody want me to read that again, or do you all feel really great with that?
A motion would need to be made, and then everyone have a roll call. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Roll call vote. Arndorfer?
Yes.
Lunning?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Farlinger?
Yes.
Rayburn, yes? I might supposed to go at the end. Bundy?
Yes.
Rayburn, yes. I don't know if I'm supposed to go at the end, I'll move my name down there. All right, so this is our resolution. These are the words we need to put out there.
I'm going to take that.
Are you gonna? Okay.
Make sure I have the right one downloaded. And I believe, so our official posting is our website. So that's where we will post for the 30 days. Front page of the website.
And then take seat in March.
30 days, so...
Yeah.
So it'd be March 2nd, essentially.
March, yep. All right?
So I'll take that. I'll give it back to you, but I just want to make sure I have the right one downloaded.
Right, right, absolutely.
And I'll send it off to all of you, you know, before posting.
All right. Now, because we're going to be getting a new board member, we are going to want to look at the positions that we have.
What committees and?
The committees, correct. And I think that it would be, you know, when we first picked the committees that we were going to be on, and maybe, maybe we could send this to everybody again, if they don't have, just to...
You bet.
And, and then, let's review this in February with our new member.
March.
March.
Thank you. You want it in March?
She'll be on in March, so we'll, let's review it in March then. So she has an opportunity to participate. And this also will give you an opportunity to find out more about the committees. And, and if you so choose, we can change, we can do some changes. We'll review it and we'll do changes if anybody, you know, wants to do something different than... Now that you're a little more familiar with what's all happening. Did you send out to all of us about the Mauer County Collaborative, right?
As a matter of fact, at 6:01 tonight, I received more information. So I will send that out as well. Kind of when we get closer and...
I was going to say that if, if, if something happened with the Mauer County Collaborative prior to our March meeting, I would be willing to go and sit on it.
Because there is, there is something in that email. So I will forward, actually, I'll forward it before then.
If that's okay with all of you, I'll go sit on that, just to get information.
Sure.
Okay.
Why don't you? I'll send it tomorrow.
All right, sounds good, sounds good. So discussion in school board committee reports. Does anybody on a current committee want to bring forth anything from the past month? Or are we just?
Well, Jen had mentioned that the Building and Grounds Committee met a couple weeks, a couple weeks ago. But I didn't bring any notes with me, so I, I mean, we talked about some of our priorities that we kind of, kind of refreshed our memories from meeting clear back in November. We're going to do a walkthrough of the building again in the next couple of months so that if there's some projects that we can do this summer, we can get started on those. But really, that's about it, I guess. We'll be meeting again right before the board meeting in February. So I'll be, it'll be fresh in my mind.
And then we're going to also do a walkthrough as a board, that same evening.
That February meeting.
Right. And also, the community ed is having their, a meeting this week, too, the community ed board. So we'll, we'll have information by then as well. All right.
Is that about it?
I think so. Let's do a quick look at the calendar of events. The 14th District Policy Committee meeting, the 20th President's Day No School, February 21st, Buildings and Grounds at 4 o'clock, school board meeting at 6 o'clock, March 3rd is mid-quarter. A motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I got Dave Harling first on that one.
810.
810, thank you very much. All right, everyone, good job.